Cool days, finally gave us some relief. But anyway, I just appreciate your reviewing that. I invite you all to visit the site, see what I have there. Visit with my neighbors if you'd like. I spoke with people at the Humane Society, Marilyn Michaelson. Over at Paydak, I've talked to them other times about whether smoke is a problem to them. But that would be my request, so. So, thank you much.
Thank you. Can we, for this staff, come back with some, are we prepared to talk to tonight? Or would you like to bring to a meeting?
I am, yeah. Dwayne, real quickly, your honor members, what I do intend to do is put it on the agenda next Wednesday at 7:00 a.m., the committee of the whole agenda. Dwayne and I had a nice conversation last week. I think the, I think the thought of allowing these in industrial zones is a reasonable one. We currently allow them in residential zones. And we won't talk about it anymore tonight because this is just an open forum, but I did want you to be aware. We'll put it on next Wednesday, next Wednesday's agenda, which is the 29th at 7:00 a.m. If you could be here, I think that would be great.
Very good.
If not, we'll advocate on behalf of you and we'll, we'll bring the appropriate ordinance with us. And then if the council wishes, they'll direct the city attorney to make that change and then that would be, bring you into compliance.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. As long as we have a few minutes, I think maybe it's a good opportunity for me to take just a minute and introduce you to a couple of guests that we have with us this evening. So Joyce Bruns had a nice conversation with my wife on Senator Maya Day last, last Friday? Friday? Friday, yeah, sorry. And we were talking about Norway. And Joyce informed my wife that there was Biarte and Linda Istabeau and their son Joel. And Biarte edits the Norway Today from an office in downtown Fergus Falls. And his 17-year-old son Joel, who's attending Hillcrest, is running for the Bergen City Council this September. So Joel, I thought you maybe take a minute and introduce yourself and tell us why in the world you wanted to get involved in politics?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my name is Joel Istabeau. I'm running for city council in Bergen from my party. So it's another system in Norway than in America, of course. So we have a multi-party system, both nationally and regionally and locally. So we run from different parties, run for different parties. And I run for the Christian Democratic Party in my town. And this year, I have been so blessed to have the opportunity to be a junior at Hillcrest Academy. And I've been very fond to live here in Fergus Falls for a year. And one of the reasons why I started to be involved in politics is I'm very passionate about which values are gonna affect the Norwegian politics in the future. And what we have seen in Norway especially, and I think we have also seen it in America too, is how the society and the nation have become more secularized. And I am very passionate about the Christian institutions, the Christian values in, in politics and how we politicians and we who are involved in politics can make it easier for the Christian institutions and, and schools and healthcare and kindergartens and things like that to have a good, to serve our citizens. So that's, of course, a national issue, but especially a local issue, especially in Norway and Bergen, where we can work with schools and healthcare and things like that, so.
Well, thank you and welcome and best of luck in, in September. And it might be noted that Bergen is a town, it's a town of almost 300,000 people. And it's also the capital of our sister city region. Is that the proper way to say it? Nordhorden is our sister city and Bergen is the largest city in that region. Is that accurate?
That's right.
Yeah. And I'm actually gonna be visiting the sister city this, this summer. So anyway, looking forward to that. So thank you, Joel, for being here and best of luck.
Good luck.
Well, wait just, just a minute. Could be efficient start time at 5:30.
Before we even, maybe I'll just mention, if you hear loud bangs or loud equipment, we're working on the parking lot. We're basically, we're all here. And in light of the forecast, we're continuing to keep working rather than tell them to stop.
Just, 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 chimney. Say I had a boiler problem. Good evening, everyone. I'd ask that you would please rise as Nate Oldencamp leads us in our invocation, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
Good to be with you all this evening on this beautiful, beautiful day. You join me in prayer. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here, for calling these leaders here together once again as a plan. Lord, give them discernment, grant them your wisdom. Lord, we as people plan our way, but Lord, you establish our steps. Thank you, Lord, for that promise. Lord, be with them here, give them what they need and their direction this evening. And we pray that you bless each of them as they go from here. Thank you, Lord, for being among us. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, May 20, 2019, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Yes.
Here.
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 Here. We have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Mr. Andrew Bremse.
Thank you, your honor members. Good evening. We have no changes in staff this evening to the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion, your honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Caroline. All favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close him, sign that motion, carries. Under D, public hearings, first item is a final cost hearing for project 5954. And I will call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro. Good evening, Brian.
Yes, good evening, your honor and members of the council. Tonight before you is in regards to public improvement 5954. This is a 2019 street utility improvement project. We'll be having the final, I'll be requesting open the final cost hearing, but before that, I'd like to go over some of the background information in regards to this project. This project is a reconstruction of the streets, many which will include five and nine-ton designs, complete replacement of sanitary sewer main, water main, and a large majority of the storm sewer. We'll also be doing miscellaneous sewer and water replacements as needed for existing pipe and/or the city's option. In this case, we're proposing to do a large majority of the sewer services for each residence. We're also gonna replace the existing curb and gutter and concrete sidewalks and driveways as needed. Location for this project, before you open the map here, is the project layout of this. This project location consists of Mount Faith Avenue, Highland Avenue, Summit Avenue, from Sheridan Street to Burlington Avenue, Sheridan Street from Mount Faith Avenue to Summit Avenue, Burlington Avenue from Summit Avenue to approximately 150 feet north. As noted, today is the hearing, final cost hearing date. Today is May 20th, 2019. If adopted, the first assessment rolls will be due July 1st, 2019. We do have a revision in the cost hearing data. Where our interest rate that we're proposing from 6.5%, we're proposing 5%. The assessment term is 15 years. The estimated special assessment rates for each residence going active is for a portion of the Batumness Street, this is for a five-ton portion of that street, regardless if it's a nine-ton or not, they're being assessed for five-ton equivalency. With the bid prices taking, we did have a slight increase, we're proposing, which included all individual mail notices to residents along with legal publication of $106.42 per lineal foot. At the previous hearing, we estimated $97, so a slight increase. So all this total cost breakdown for the special assessment. For the special assessment streets put in active, for city property, that's $55,870.50. Special assess for streets, active lineal footage for independent school district 544 property, proposing $87,477.24. Special assessment street active for residential and others, $326,645.52. So the total assessment cost associated with this project is $469,993.26. This portion in conjunction with everything, we're looking at a total project cost of $3.3 million, $704,441.66. I've laid out the funding and in regards to the special assessments, we're looking to do some public improvement bonds, shitty share with tax levy, $559,654.91. City sanitary sewer fund, we're looking to fund that as $1 million, $36,526.98. The city water enterprise fund, $934,356.81. City storm sewer fund, a total of $703,909.70. So once again, the total project cost, that includes the contingency and engineering, Since the notices have come out, I want to make a note, I've received five general concerns questions in regards to this project. One in regards to 716 Mount Faith, there was a change of address, change of ownership. Another one, 626 East Summit. They, it's noted also on the bottom of your cost hearing sheet, there was a little discrepancy between the frontage that was being assessed and what we arrived at was a reduction of seven feet, so they're being assessed for a total of 80 feet, and that's included in your individual notices in the packet. 301 Summit, they just had some general questions about the assessment methodology. Fourth question was from an unknown address, just general concerns, requesting the interest rate to be reduced. And the last fifth one that I received was 616 East Mount Faith. Staff spoke general clarity about, to this member. I called them back, left the message. I have not heard anything back. So at this time, your honor, I'm requesting you to open the final cost hearing.
Thank you, Brian. And at this time, I will do that. We'll open the public hearing for this project. Anyone wishing to step to lectern, please do so, state your name. Anyone wishing to speak to this? Hearing none, we will close the hearing and it's back to the council. Questions of Brian? If not, we will be looking for a resolution adopting the final cost assessment for this project.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent.
Your honor, members, we do want that final cost adoption contingent upon awarding the bid. So if the, if Councilmember Thompson and Councilmember Hagberg would amend that, I think that would be appropriate.
Sorry, okay. So I got ahead of myself. So it's a resolution adopting the cost assessment contingent upon awarding of the bid. So is that? Yep, that's fine.
Fine, is that fine?
Yes.
Any questions of council, Brian or any other staff? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Next, we will move on to the awarding of the bids. And first, we will have the award of the bid for project 5954, which is East Mount Faith Street Improvement Project. Brian Uvaro again.
Yes, thank you, your honor. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Tyson Hicek from Moore Engineering. He's got a PowerPoint presentation that's gonna cover a lot of things we just talked about, but the project as a whole. So at this time, Tyson?
Good evening, Tyson.
Your honor, members of the council? Okay, I can run it from right here, right? So related to the improvement hearing agenda, a lot of the, I'll try to cover this quickly because Brian talked about the majority of it just recently. Here's kind of an overview of what we're looking to talk about is the, the overview of the improvement, the special assessment, assessment process, the final costs. We've already had public comment and then potential action. We talked about the project area. The utility improvements for this project essentially are full reconstruction of all utilities, sewer, water, and storm sewer. One major factor with respect to this project is the storm sewer upgrade. We are taking the storm sewer and upgrading it and relocating it outside of Sheridan Street. Anybody that's familiar with the road down there, a portion of the deterioration and the, and the big hump in the roadway is, is primarily caused by the storm sewer in that area. So what we're looking to do is actually take that shifted outside of the road to prevent us from having those issues down, coming back in the future. With respect to surface improvements, we're looking at full reconstruction of the streets. We are salvaging curb and gutter where it is decent and where we don't need to replace it. But one thing we are doing is adding curb and gutter to both sides of Summit Avenue, where it does not exist today. We're also adding drain tile and geotextile fabric to be installed throughout this project area, and that's primarily as, to help stabilize the roadway section because we configure based on soil borings, we're gonna run into unsuitable materials. This shows kind of surface improvements. The darker shade on Summit and a portion of Burlington will be designed to a nine-ton road section. The remaining internal streets will be designed to five-ton. As Brian mentioned earlier, the assessments are based on a five-ton roadway only to the residents. So the city is actually taking it, paying for the incremental tonnage that is going to those roads. This whole assessment process has followed Minnesota statutes, chapter 429. For the most part, this is primarily the process that the council followed on, on other projects. There are two items that are slightly new to this process, one being the special benefit appraisal report that was obtained prior to award or prior to tonight. Essentially, what that appraisal did was help to set the benefit to all the commercial and residential properties within the project area and help us to gauge the benefit as we're writing the assessment or the feasibility report. As we kind of go through, you can see the milestones that we've achieved. We get to tonight. This is also a new process within the special assessment process from which the city's been following, which is holding the final assessment hearing prior to awarding a contract. And essentially, what this is doing is allowing the council to determine if there's any opposition or appeals that would potentially come forward from the project prior to awarding a construction contract. So gives you the latitude to determine if there's any, anybody that's gonna be against the project or potentially appeal it before committing to a construction contract. Final project costs, this slide is, is kind of a regurgitation to what Brian had just talked about. Breaks down the assessments down the left side, total, total special assessments being that $469,993.26 and a total project cost of $3,704,441.66. When we talk about basis of the assessment, that special assessment constitutes 12.7% of the total project cost. When you look at the $97 to the $106.42 with respect to the assessment front footage for the cost per foot, you know, that increase is really amounts to about $37,000 post-bid to, pre-bid to post-bid. So the total assessment dollar pool that went up was that $37,000. The assessment policy really dovetails in with the appraisal report that was done. And what that appraisal, basically, when we ran the cost through how the city's special assessment process is gonna fund, it came out very close to, and actually slightly lower than with the appraisal's deemed benefit. And that is that $5,500 to $6,000 for a residential equivalent unit. And so the final assessment within the, for a 50-foot lot comes out to that $5,321. For paying assessments, this is what was included in the assessment, the final assessment handout that went to residents. So we're highlighting a few of these, a few of the items that are in here. 65 years and older can potentially apply for total disability or deferment. If those exist, they can see the city administrator. Property owner has the right to prepay the entire assessment in full prior to July 1st, 2019, and that would forego any interest charges. One thing to note, that is precluded that the adoption of the assessments happens tonight. Otherwise, that date would probably slightly have to be modified. If prepaid is not made, there'll be equal annual installments for a 15-year assessment, the first which would be due September 30th. Partial payments can be done, but those prepayments will only shorten the total number of payments and not the annual payment amount, basically intermediarily. And the rate of interest that's on this slide actually has been modified. The interest rate has been modified to 5%. Final piece to touch on is actually challenges by property owners. Written or obligation, written and oral objections are considered at this hearing. I think it's important to note that no appeals may be taken unless written notices is received at this hearing tonight or in writing prior to, and I don't know that we've had anything in writing prior to. Once the adoption of the assessment rule is official, there's a 30-day appeal period that runs out. And within that 30-day appeal period, if someone reserves their right to appeal tonight, then within 10 days of that 30-day milestone, they have to file that court, that appeal in district court. And that needs to be certified to the mayor or the administrator as well.
Thank you, Tyson. Any questions? Any questions? Any council?
I think, your honor, I think this is the right way to do it. You know, we established the, the value that would be to the residents and, you know, and I think in this instance, we've actually got the horse before the cart. So I think it's a good job done by, by the city engineer, Dipan. Thank you.
Would you care to offer the resolution awarding that bid?
I could do, yeah. I'll make that resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caroline, a second. Further discussion?
Members, just to reiterate, the previous action was contingent upon awarding this bid. So if this is approved this evening, then the assessment rules would be officially adopted due to the previous action we just took.
Roll call, please.
Carnison.
Yes.
Jessison.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Hagberg.
Yes.
Flom.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Thank you, Brian, for your work on this. Thank you, Tyson. Item number two under awarding of bids is the resolution, awarding bid for public improvement 9692, which is Phase Two of the RTC deconstruction project. And I will call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro.
Yes, thank you, your honor. I'm gonna turn it over right away here to Bruce Paulson from StanTech. He's gonna talk about the bids that we just received. I also invited him to, to answer any questions in regards to Phase Two. We'll try to address those to the best of our abilities. So at this time, Bruce, if you'd like.
Good evening, Bruce, welcome.
Good evening, your honor, city council members. Thank you very much. On May 8th, we received bids for the Phase Two deconstruction project at the Regional Treatment Center. Of the nine bids that were received, three of those were considered non-responsive due to their lack of submitting a materials disposal plan, which was required on the bid form. That was based on information that we provided in the bidding, bidding documents, that there are asbestos-containing materials that are known in all three of the buildings that are being removed from the campus, as well as it was clearly pointed out several times during our mandatory pre-bid walkthrough, that there were asbestos-containing materials that would need to be properly dealt with. Putting all that aside, we have a project that's on the National Register of Historic Places. We've been under a fair amount of scrutiny with the State Historic Preservation Office through the entire process of getting Phase Two to a point where it could be bid and award the contract. And this material disposal plan, as far as I'm concerned, and as it's been the same on the past three projects for this campus, is very important to make sure that the contractor understands the rules and regulations that are in the state of Minnesota as far as regulated waste and where they can or can't dispose of them. And without that plan, we don't believe they've done their due diligence when submitting their bid. So unfortunately, the low bidder was one of the three non-responsive bidders. And so if anybody's got any questions about responsive versus responsible, I can certainly try and address that at this point. But I'm not claiming any of the contractors who submitted a bid are not responsible. I'm merely stating that they're non-responsive in providing the information that was required of them when they submitted their bid.
Since you brought up the question of the disposal plan, for the bidder that is going to be recommended, can you tell us what their disposal plan is for the debris? Is it all gonna go to our local landfill or most of it? Or, or can you tell us at this time? What can you tell us about that?
It's included in the bid. I don't have that information right with me, but they, they did indicate where all of the materials, whether it's clean or it's got some lead paint in it, as well as where the asbestos-containing material actually has to go out of state because there aren't any, any landfills in the state of Minnesota that will accept asbestos-containing material. So I know that material is being shipped to, into North Dakota, to one of the local landfills there that will accept that regulated waste.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, our recommendation is to award the contract to Carlton Companies for a total based bid of $2,270,000. That compares to our estimate of $2.7 million.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. Brian, did you have any other, any other comments? Or we can take questions from the council?
I was just gonna ask what the time, what do you anticipate or estimate the timeline would be for?
I just, I looked at this in the spec, I believe substantial completion is November of this, this fall, and final completion next spring. We typically do that for surface restoration, but majority of it should be completed this fall. So with Carlton's Companies' bid, I've laid out in my memo total project costs. I have 20% for construction contingencies, engineering, design, administration, and city administration costs, off-costs amount of 3%. So at this time, the total project cost estimating $2,943,000. So at this time, like Bruce had noted, requesting award of the construction services contract to Carlton Companies, Inc. in the amount of $2,270,000 and zero cents.
Thank you, Brian. I have one question. Absolutely. So you mentioned that it was about $430,000 under the estimate, it was 2.7, is that right?
That's correct.
2.27, so 500, a little less than 500. I know that, that the use of those funds was fairly broad in the legislation that was passed. Are we able, are there other uses that we can access those funds for on that campus?
Yes, your honor members, that, that's a good question, and it'll answer one of the questions I was gonna raise, and that's just making everybody aware of the fact that we received $3.5 million last year, and that's the funding source for this $2.9 million project. So that's, that's where the money's coming from for those asking. There was some parameters along the lines of the legislative language. For example, the, the last language that we had said that we could not use any of this $3.5 million to demolish or alter significantly the entirety of the horseshoe, and that was the compromise we struck at the legislature last year. But we certainly could use the funds for any other buildings or But we certainly could use the funds for any other buildings or activities outside of the U-shape and/or preservation-type material, or preservation-type activities related to the U-shape or anything else on the campus.
And is there timeline on it? There is not a timeline on these funds? They have to be used within the by, within the by-.
There is. I don't remember off the top of my head. I want to say it's December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two is when these funds would be expired. The grant funds from the first phase, which we still have remaining funds in that pool of money, expire December thirty-first of two thousand twenty.
Thank you. So, we would entertain a resolution awarding that bid for Public and Proven nine-six-nine-two, and then we can ask questions.
I will offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. Questions for either Brian or Bruce?
Comment?
Sure, Scott, go ahead.
It's hard to lose. And I think that there'll be some who will find this to be some sort of a celebration when this becomes. But it's not for me, and I think for many people, it's not a time to celebrate. It's a sad time, I think, to recognize that Fergus Falls is losing historically and architecturally significant buildings with economic development potential. I think this is a hard thing to accept, a hard thing to do. And the question that I have had to respond to from people that have come to me and asked about this, what the progress is, what the status is, what's going on, it kind of boils down to why? Why is this happening? And I've had no good answer for that. There've been many ideas presented for reuse of these buildings. And it's not, this is happening not because those ideas couldn't be done, that they couldn't creatively have been adapted, and that these buildings couldn't have somehow been reused. It's not that it couldn't be done. It's that there was no will for it, there was no vision for it, and it's come to this point where now we're doing, spending taxpayer money to take these buildings out. My position has been all along that we ought to get a plan first, and if the demolition was required, then go ahead. And we have a commitment to do a plan. And again, I feel there's no compelling reason why these buildings couldn't stand until that plan is completed. And if it takes a couple of years, and at that point, you know, then we go ahead. But I guess what it boils down to for me is that if you just don't want to do something, any excuse will do.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions, comments?
Your Honor, I think, just to, just to obviously, you know, respond to Councilmember Kwame, I don't think that's a fair statement to say that we haven't tried to find alternatives to new buildings. We've, you know, as we said today, you know, there is still another group that's interested in the tips of the, of the property that remains. And, you know, they've got, obviously, the potential of both federal and state tax increment, historic tax credits, and, you know, they've got the potential to apply for, obviously, some housing tax credits. So, I think, you know, it's unfair to say we have done nothing. We've entertained, you know, a significant number of people, you know, and each and every one of them gets, you know, to a point whereby, you know, they've delayed kind of, you know, decisions of the council. The council's re, you know, renegated on decisions they've made to allow them opportunity and more time. So, yeah, and I think as much as, obviously, there's a segment of the community that would love to see every brick saved at the RTC. You know, there's also a larger segment that, you know, would like to see, you know, the city do something that doesn't relieve, you know, relieve some of the burden of that property. You know, the funds to maintain it, you know, have dwindled to the point whereby it's now going to start costing the taxpayer money to actually maintain buildings that are left. So, I think we're doing our predatory duty to the citizens of Fergus Falls. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Jessison.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes.
Fomi.
No.
Thompson.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Next item of business, thank you, Brian, thank you, Bruce. Under petitions and communications is a proclamation for Public Works Week. And I will read a portion of that proclamation. Whereas the public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems and programs such as parks, waters, water, sewers, streets, public buildings, solid waste collection and disposal, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction are vitally dependent upon the efforts and scale of public works officials. Now, therefore, I, Ben Shire, Mayor of the City of Fergus Falls, hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, as Public Works Week in the City of Fergus Falls. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which Public Works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. So, with that, I just would like to additionally say, our Public Works Director, Guy, thank you to yourself and to all your staff. I mean, there's not a finer public works department in the state of Minnesota, and we really appreciate the work that you guys do every day, day and night. So, thank you.
Thank you. Pass that on.
Next is the, next item is a consent agenda. There's a copy in your packet, and there's also, Lynn has put a five items on the board. If any council member would like to discuss any of those items individually, we will remove them. And if not, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented. Thank you. Councilmember Hagberg?
Off, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Roll call, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Jessison.
Yes.
Hicks. Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes.
Fomi.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, this evening, we will have a first reading of ordinance eighty-five, seventh series, and which is the rezoning of property from R eight to R four, as requested by Platt Property.
I think Ryan is here. Is there any questions?
If there's any questions, we'll direct them to Ryan Miller. If not, I think we just need someone to introduce this tonight.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Item number two is a second reading of ordinance number eighty-three, seventh series, City Code, Chapter ten, dealing with construction. I'll call on our city attorney, Rolf Nicomal.
Thank you. If there's any questions, we can answer those. But there are two amendments that I would like to make to the final reading for tonight, and I will read them as follows. Under section ten-point-two-four, paragraph D, we should insert the words "except installing furnaces" at the end of that section to make it clear that a homeowner cannot install their own furnace. Minnesota law requires furnaces to be installed by licensed contractors. Homeowners can do a lot of other things, but that would be one thing that they can't do. The other.
Question?
Yep.
What do you mean by furnace?
Well, Guy, I'm going to ask you.
Is a heat pump a furnace?
That requires another permit and license, a plumbing license, but a heat generating appliance.
Toaster?
Curling iron, yeah, I don't know.
Maybe heat generating appliance is the key word, because a water heater would be a heat generating appliance. It's not a furnace as well. So, perhaps that would be a better, better descriptive term to use, heat generating appliance rather than furnace. I don't know.
Yeah, maybe we should look at the code, the state code, and see what they have for awarding on that.
Well, he can come back, obviously, if you would like, with, it doesn't really matter. But I mean, I think the intent is that, is that it provide for any installation involving a gas, appliance that, or a furnace or a heat generating appliance that services a home.
But a heat pump is not gas, it's electric. And you can install electric yourself. It has to be inspected by a state inspector.
Well, right. And electrical, electrical installations are handled under the Electrical Code, which permits that. This is under the Mechanical Code, which deals with ventilation, exhaust, manufactured fireplaces, chimneys, vents, other things along those niches. So, I think if, I think if we utilize the term furnace, it's pretty clear, because it falls under the, falls under the definition of what a mechanical contractor can install. Okay? So, I think, I think the, I think just inserting those words, "except installing furnaces," provides enough guidance on what will be required. If it poses a problem, we'll come back up with that issue at a later date. So, are there any questions about that? And the other amendment would be to section seven-point-four-two, paragraph J, at sub-paragraph-two, paragraph C. And this is the section involving awnings and canopies. That section would now read, "All adjustable awnings shall be supported with outposts by metal hardware and framing firmly attached to the building so as to leave the sidewalk wholly unobstructed thereby." The language used in the previous ordinance utilized the terms iron brackets and iron frames. And this, and that comes from when iron was the primary source of supporting an awning. So, this simply just updates the use of a metal of some sort to support the awning. So, that would be what I would suggest, that if it's acceptable to you, that we would then have your second reading and approve the ordinance.
Thank you, Rolf.
Can you need someone to offer that second reading? I'll do that.
I think we're just going to do a roll call, as long as everyone's okay with the amendments that Rolf presented this evening. Roll call, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Jessison.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes.
Fomi.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
That ordinance is approved. Item number three is a resolution approving the final plat of eight-point-two-second, two-seven acre parcel located at four-oh-one and four-eleven Tower Road, as requested by Interstate Engineering on behalf of H nine LLC. And we'll call on our Ryan Miller, Planning and Development Specialist. Good evening, Ryan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, members of the council. Yes, my name is Ryan Miller. I'm the Development Planning Specialist for the city. And tonight, I have a presentation for the final plat of the legacy addition. This is a piece of land located on four-oh-one through four-eleven Tower Road. It is currently zoned R four. It's owned by H nine LLC. And the final plat was submitted by Interstate Engineering on behalf of H nine LLC. The final plat includes subdividing a current parcel of land, roughly eight-point-two-five acres, into three parcels of land. This is a final plat. The preliminary plat, as well as a variance within that preliminary plat, was approved by the city council on December seventeenth of last year. This final plat was approved unanimously, unanimously by the Planning Commission at the May thirteenth Planning Commission meeting, where a public hearing was held. The approval was unanimously made with a condition that a minor correction be made before recordation of the final plat. And I'll show you what that correction is in just a bit. So, this is the subject property, like I said, located around Tower Road, just east of Tower Road, just north of the river. This is the property as it is today. And this is how the final plat lays that piece of land out. So, there will be three lots, starting on the left or the west. Lot one would be a roughly one-point-six-five acre parcel. That's where the existing apartment building is, right off of Tower Road. Just to the east of that is Lot Two, which would be about three-point-six-five acres. And there is an access easement connecting to that lot. And then on the far right, Lot Three, approximately two-point-nine-five acres. And that closes out the final plat. The one correction that I noted is just removing a line on the final plat that shows an access easement. The access easement is included to connect to, to allow access to Lot Two. But the plat just shows it going into the city's right-of-way, so it's outside of the lines of the final plat. And it's redundant in that there's already a city right-of-way there, so it didn't need to be included on there. So, the plat was reviewed by city staff, and the plat meets the requirements of City Code. There was a variance, like I mentioned, approved by the city council in December seventeenth of two thousand eighteen for the building on Lot One. So, with that, and the approval by the Planning Commission staff recommends approval of the final plat for legacy addition. There are two courses of action for the council tonight. Then with that, one is a motion to approve. Should the council choose to approve the legacy addition final plat, a motion should be made to approve the resolution approving the final plat. The second course is to deny. Should the council choose to deny the legacy plat addition final plat, a motion should be made to deny the resolution to approve the final plat stating the reason, reasons for denial. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions of the council, Scott?
Ryan, you indicated that there's an easement for Lot Two for access. Was there also an easement for access for Lot Three, or is that one just on its own?
There, there's no need for, for the access easement to Lot Three. I believe the reason for the access easement to Lot Two was because there are wetlands that would block access from our, the city right-of-way south of the lots into Lot Two. But there would be no wetland blocking Lot Three from our city right-of-way, so.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Would this have any impact on the, obviously, we have an easement for the trail? Did you want to just talk to that, Ryan?
So, the, there is an easement located on, on the final plat for the trail as well. I think that was one of the pieces that was missing on a previous plat, but that has been added in now. So, there is a trail easement on the property. There's also utility easement that has been added into the property as well.
Yep.
Any other questions? If not, someone will have to offer the resolution approving the final plat.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second.
Second, Jim, thank you. Any further questions?
I just have one.
Yes.
Was there going to be an additional document memorializing those easements for utilities and the trail easement? If so, I mean, there's probably, my recommendation is there should be a document that just memorializes it, that gets recorded, that sets forth the, some of the terms, and I'd be happy to draft that. But the, but the resolution could be offered contingent on that there be a written document memorializing those, those easements. I mean, it's included on the plat, and so therefore, it would become a public right. But it may not hurt to have some type of document that memorializes the, who's responsible for maintaining it and that type of stuff.
Krista, is that accepted?
Yes.
And I guess, Ryan, I don't know if anything has been done like that, I mean, in this regard, but that would be my recommendation. We can do that, to get that document drafted.
Certainly. Okay, thank you, Rolf.
Ryan?
Yeah, there has been one, for one easement, I know, and we have a recorded document number. But no, I have not seen. I agree, too, for the trail easement, those others, so.
Yep.
It's partially.
It's not hard, it's just, but we'll do that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Ryan. Roll call, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Jessison.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes.
Fomi.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of one million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and eighty cents. And if there's any questions relating to that, we'll direct them to our Finance Director, Bill Sonmore.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim. It's a resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry, it's a resolution.
I'll second that, and I do have a couple of questions.
Right, Scott.
I spoke with Bill earlier, and so this should not be a terrible surprise or anything. But there's a couple of items that are on the resolution of accounts that stuck out to me. First one being a cost for remodeling, and it was described as armory remodeling. And I believe that in this case, it's the building that we know as the Army Reserve Building out in the industrial park, not the armory by the high school. And it would be helpful to get a little clarity if there's any more to say on that, Bill?
I think you said that very well. That's the building that the Port Authority is purchasing and renovating for the Lakes Country Service Co-op Level Four Education Facility. So, it's a good clarification so that the public isn't confused that it's the other armory over there, and it's not that one over there.
And as I understand it, the paperwork in the beginning of the project, the architect chose to call that the Armory Building, and that's just the name that stuck with it as it went forward. But it's good to know what building we're talking about. The other question that I had was in several of the department sections of the resolutions.
The other question that I had was in several of the department sections of the resolutions of the amounts that were paid, indicates something to do with time clocks. And apparently, this is something new that the city has done, and if you could talk about that, I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, so you'll see in several places within your resolution of accounts, we're charging out an invoice for Time Clock Plus. It is a new program we're adding on to our payroll program to gain efficiencies and streamline that process. And that's all I'm going to say about it, because we have Mike Hartwell, our HR director here, who can speak much more accurate than I can to that. So we'll let Mike talk about it a little bit.
Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for having me come speak about this new software program. It's actually a Windows-based software program that's going to enhance our current time and attendance system. We currently spend about 130 work hours a year just on paper sorting every payroll process, which is times 26 times a year. That's about $4,891 of payroll time just to process paper. So Time Clock Plus will be a web-based time and attendance system, which will allow our supervisors and our employees to have access real time on a web-based system and eliminate a whole lot of paperwork, errors, and other issues associated with manual processes. So we're trying to move into the 21st century of some of our IT and software enhancements, and this is our first start to do that.
Thank you. Mike, any questions? All right. Any other questions for Bill on the claims presentation? Scott, that's all you, those are the, that's all I had?
Bill, did you have something you wanted to add?
Nope, because I know you're going to ask for roll call. That's all I was going to say.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no reports from staff, administrative officers, there are no board committee or department reports. There is no old or unfinished business, as well as there is also no new business that I'm aware of this evening. Just a couple miscellaneous announcements. Most city facilities will be closed for Memorial Day next week. Garbage, Monday's garbage and recycling will be collected on Tuesday. Tuesday's garbage and recycling will be collected on Wednesday. Next committee, the whole meeting is May 29th, Wednesday, May 29th, and the next council meeting is 5:30 June 3rd. And with that.[1773.25]